But what I did realize was, um, I realized that I was paying a different rate when I first moved up here as opposed to now. And I have a huge problem with Central Hudson doing estimates and not actually reading your usage, because it's like, to me, it doesn't make sense. Why not come out and read people's meters and charge them exactly what they use instead of estimating it, which it could be, I'm sure, higher than lower? And the first time my electricity got cut off is like a real injustice, which I still feel some type of way towards Central Hudson, because like, it was cut off and it just, I sent it, like, when I first moved, like, you had to send in all your information, your IDs and such, which I did. And I remembered waiting for a bill that never arrived. And one day I wake up, my electricity is cut off, never got a cutoff notice, never even got the bill to pay it, which I haven't had a job at the time that I had income to pay. And ever since, it's been literally an emotional journey staying a customer of yours, because I sent in all my information. And it's so funny, in the same house, the first floor had electricity and got all their stuff, but the second floor was always an issue. And I literally spent, I think, six weeks in the dark running electricity from the first floor, which was also cut off, because they weren't having that. And this last time my bill got cut off, I don't know if it was the mailman's fault or what, but I never received the pink slip. And one morning I wake up, my electricity is gone without any warning. And when I go to DSS, yes, they paid it, or you know that assistance program or whatnot. However, that now, not only do I have to pay Central Hudson a bill, but I also have to pay DSS for the next two years, fifty dollars a month, which I am three months behind because of some other pickles that I have going on. But it's a real struggle right now to pay it as is. Even although I'm a landlord and whatnot, that doesn't mean you're rich. It really doesn't. It means you have more bills. For instance, I have property taxes coming up, that's like a couple thousand. So to add this to it now, and you guys want to rate, that's not right. And it definitely goes to them all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Zimmer, and after Mr. Zimmer will be Jill Obrich.
My name is Fred Zimmer. I live in the town of Isopis. I was concerned a few years ago when Central Hudson was allowed to sell to a foreign company. And I was really surprised to hear that, that foreign company has been allowed to purchase a number of other energy sources in our country. The energy is, our energy is our lifeblood. It's what we need. It's our economic development. They showed a slide earlier here today, thirteen point two million in economic development. Economic development should have been placed in lowering our energy costs to bring our industries back. Another thing here, that's kind of been overlooked, I think, they're asking for a twenty-eight to thirty percent increase in delivery charge across the board. Now, I don't care how you sugarcoat that. That is going to be forever and ever. They might try and offset this now with what they call bill credits, whatever that is. But next year, if they don't want to put those bill credits in, you get hit for all thirty percent. That's just outrageous. I think that they should conform to the governor's manifesto of two percent. Let their profit be two percent. That's what they're freezing everybody else at. This should go the other way.
Please let him finish his comments, please.
Just be aware, this isn't a thirteen percent, or a seven percent, or a three percent. This is a thirty percent increase in your delivery charge. Be aware of it. Numbers don't lie, but liars do number. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Obrich, and then will be Andrew Moss.
I've never found anything in it. Okay, thank you very much for listening to us, and I can appreciate your, your problems, your problems with electronics. It's kind of the state of where we are, all of us, okay? But I wanted to make three points concerning the reason why, if anything, the rates should be rolled back, not increased for Fordus Central Hudson. I have gone online, and I'm sorry I can't give you the exact link that I got this information. In 2015, in the beginning of July, electric rates would, well, would have, the Public Service Commission allowed and approved electric rates that would have, that increased 2.3 million in 2015, or up three percent, or eighteen cents a month in that total bill for electricity. In 2016, the PSC allowed these three years, in 2016, electric rates increased seventeen million, rising 3.4 percent. This is just electricity. And the PSC allowed that. In 2017, electric rates will go up twenty-four, twenty-four million, up 4.8 percent, all right? That's just for electricity. So if I add this all up, it's a six point thirteen percent increase in three years. And now they're asking for another seven point five to eleven point six percent rate increase. May I ask you a question, judges? How many people do you know have made this kind of an increase in their income? Because this is outrageous, asking people who don't get much of an income increase to come up with an increase in this. Plus the fact, we're dealing with an enormous amount of medical insurance and drug company increases. On top of this, I think you could really appreciate the fact that people can't afford this. If anything, it should be rolled back. That's point number one. Point number two, Fordus, again, I looked this up online, the assets of Fordus is twenty-nine billion dollars in 2015, and the revenue in 2015 that they made using us as customers, their revenue was 6.7 billion. Question, why is its acquisition of Central Hudson was a lot of that in debt? I believe that's what you said. You said partially it was debt. Why did they go into debt? Why are they paying interest when they have twenty-nine billion dollars in revenue? I don't get it. Okay? The numbers, like he said before, the numbers just don't add up. The third point I would like to make is the, the interest of the Central Hudson's Employee Training Center. I believe somebody already mentioned that. But again, why are we having something that, where you're saying, oh, people are putting in solar panels, and we're not getting a lot of people, you know, people are getting, not using enough electricity? Well, if they're not using as much electricity, what do you need to build and expand for customer, customer service, or employees if, if you're getting, if you're making less electricity? Again, the numbers are not adding up here. If anything, I would be cutting back on things like this. So having as a, a thirteen million dollar employee training center, I think, as other people have mentioned, is ludicrous at best. I would appreciate if you take the fact that I think every person that has been up here besides Central Hudson, has really said to you, do not raise these rates. If anything, lower them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Moss, and after Mr. Moss, we have Alex, Elick Miklejohn.
I live in Ruby, just outside of Kingston, and I want to applaud those that have come before me, saying a lot of the things that perhaps I might have said. Part of, part of my problem right off the bat is, I don't know where to begin to talk about corporate America. And of course, Fordus isn't an American company, but nevertheless, you can look throughout our economy, whether it's healthcare, the EPA, FDA, all the agencies that are given the task of protecting us, our environment, our water, our air, those agencies, they're intent, they're, they're meant to protect us. So what happens when a big corporation comes along and says, gee, we just invented a new pesticide, this is going to be great, we're going to make a lot of profit off it, go to the EPA, spread a little friendship around there, and get them to approve it? Who, who is the EPA protecting? And this is a similar case, where a corporation is at this between us and something that's not an option. Electricity isn't an option. We don't, it's not something we can choose not to have, and it's not something we can go to someone else to get. We can't go to another electric company to get our services. We are dealing with a monopoly. And as such, we expect the Public Service Commission, our elected representatives, and anybody else who has any influence over this decision-making process to say, is this good for the citizens? Is this good for the people of the Hudson Valley and beyond? Is this in their best interest? Oh, let me, wait, let me shed a tear for the corporation, when instead of making nine percent profit, they make eight and a half percent profit, and take half percent and pay for all this stuff, so we don't have to have a rate increase? You know, that's what it comes down to. They want their nine percent every year, they don't want to dig into their pocket, and as the other young lady said, their twenty-nine billion dollar, or twelve billion, how many billions of dollars Fordus has, and we're talking about they want to spend thirty-six million for a training center? Fine, Fordus, pick up some money, write a check. It's nothing to Fordus to pay for a training center, or anything else they want to do in this Central Hudson area. They have the money. But that's not how corporations work. Corporations don't say, how can I benefit my customers? They say, how can I make as much money as I can off of my customers? And that's exactly what goes on here and throughout the United States of America, that corporations don't always have the interest of the people at heart. They have their shareholders, and their board of directors, et cetera. We all, many people work for corporations, so I'm not anti-corporation. What we need are corporations that are good citizens, like, and that care about the people they serve and produce products for. That they produce products that don't pollute, and don't harm the people that they sell products to. Fordus may be a good company or a bad company, I don't really know. But I don't expect them to come down here, buy Central Hudson, raise all the rates, come up with all kinds of infrastructure plans, perhaps, that they can well afford, instead of keeping our rates going up and up and up. So we need the public service commissions, the legislators, we need protections for the people. We need protection from the corporations, because the corporations do not have our personal interests at heart, they have their shareholders' interests at heart. Let them take some of their profits and pay for the remediation, take some of the profits and improve their training system. They have the money, but they want us to provide the money. That's not right. Our rates are high, they're high enough, and if they can't make it work, well, maybe they should get out of these energy businesses, let someone come in who can do it better, and do it for us with a little concern and love. So I have a lot of other notes, but I'm kind of like, you know, all the, all the details about this proposal, there are some good things in the proposal. I'm not opposed to everything in it. What I am opposed to is a corporate mentality that says, we have to make sure that we never actually pay for anything, that the customer pays for it. That we don't dig into our shareholders' pockets, we dig into the customers' pockets. The shareholders can afford it, Fordus can afford it, we shouldn't have to pay this little nickel and dime stuff, and have our rates raised every year, which looks like what's going to happen. So I'm a little annoyed at Central Hudson for even presenting this proposal, and as a longtime customer of Central Hudson, I'm very disappointed that we are now subjugated by a larger international corporation that's running around the United States, buying other companies, and with the intent of what? Oh, making profit off of the people of those other states. So this is the bigger battle, is having corporations that are, that are making a profit, a reasonable profit, and yet concerned, being concerned for the citizens. And we can, we can all imagine that we've heard of or seen news stories about corporations doing something, polluting something, or raising some rate, and they didn't do it in our interest, they did it in their interest. And that needs to stop in this country, and our politicians in Washington, and New York State, and here in the Hudson Valley need to stand for the citizen, not the corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Elick Miklejohn is our next speaker, and then we'll have Iris Marie Bloom.
So I'd also like to thank the folks for the opportunity to speak, and I really want to thank the people that have come before. I'm up here as a resident, you know, homeowner, a new homeowner, I've only been in the area since April. So there's a lot about Central Hudson and the whole history here that I really didn't know about, and it's been quite an education, being here tonight and listening to some of this, some of the talk. I came because I'd originally gotten some of the materials about the proposal, and I was struck by the sheer hutzpah of some of the things here. Particularly, I was struck by the proposal to raise the rate of return of the corporation. I mean, you know, this is a regulated public utility, and this goes back to the devil's bargain that was struck a hundred years ago, or whatever, with utilities in this country, that instead of them being public entities and running the public interest, they would be monopolies, because energy provision is, in essence, a monopoly operation. You can't have multiple transmission lines, it doesn't make any sense. Physically, it lends itself to a monopoly, and so you have, instead, it'll be regulated by a public entity according to certain definite rules, one of which is the allowed rate of return, which means a guaranteed rate of return. And there are not many companies that have a guaranteed rate of return, and can adjust the charges they levy on their customers to enable that rate of return to be obtained. So, but we now have a proposal that doesn't just say, well, we need to make these adjustments because we're having trouble with the nine percent. They're saying we need nine and a half percent, we have to raise our rate of return. And I just found that kind of remarkable, and just sort of that they can just stand up there and, and, you know, and say that so openly. And also things like the, this increase on the fixed cost portion of the, of the bill, the unavoidable cost, the disincentive to changing your utility use. I mean, these are sort of like, I'm trying to understand, like, where all these kinds of things are coming from. And, and when I heard the folks, I think Susan was talking about this, the, some of the history of what's going on here, and particularly the purchase of the company by this foreign competition, foreign corporation, it really took me back to the days of the financial crisis and the time leading up to that, when, when company after company was left in wreckage by financial, financially motivated, essentially financial operations played out, on, you know, using those companies, using the physical and resource, you know, the, the resources of the company as the bar, as the chips for these financial, you know, maneuvers that were being made, incurring huge amounts of debt, leverage, you know, the leveraging and encouraging huge debt levels that ended up, that companies could not bear, and that, and that, and that untold workers, you know, lost their jobs in these things. Now, I don't know that this is quite at that level, but it has all the earmarks, to me, of a financial play, using our rates and our, you know, the customers here as the chips to make that play come, come out. I don't think the Public Service Commission should be part of that play. The, you know, a financial arrangement, you know, and not even so much the fact there's a foreign corporation, but that, but this is a financial, this is a, this is a play not to increase efficiencies, not to increase service to utility users, it's a play to increase profits, focused on this sort of financial shenanigans that I would, I would bet, actually, are going on behind the scenes. Now, I don't know, I don't know much, I'm just learning about Fordus, and, you know, so I don't really know all the ins and outs of that, but it certainly looks very familiar from things that have gone before. And I really don't think that it should be supported here in the Hudson Valley. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Iris Marie Bloom, then we'll have Penny Coleman, and our last speaker that I have right now is Barbara Scott. So first, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you so much. I would like to really give a shout out to the speakers. I really agree with everyone who's spoken so far tonight, and especially Assembly Member Cahill, Richard Burkey, Susan Gillespie, Andrew Wilner, and the woman who had her rate, her electricity cut off three times. Somebody should be behind bars for that. If I am mugged, and I'm, if I'm walking down the street and I'm mugged, even if I'm not injured, that's a crime, that's an assault. When somebody wakes up in the dark and has to live in the dark for six weeks, and didn't get a shut-off notice, I mean, this, this is criminal. So I want to just really give a shout out to everyone who's spoken to the economic justice, economic injustice aspects of this theft by a foreign multinational corporation. I want to speak to climate change, and to the ways that this proposal does not represent a good faith effort, or best practices, or best possible effort yet, to reduce carbon footprint. We are in a climate emergency, we can't do little bit by bit anymore, we could have done that forty years ago, twenty years ago, but we are in a climate emergency. And just real quick, coming up on the five-year anniversary of Sandy, that was officially 233 deaths, seventy-five billion cost, that's the official statistics, I think it was a bit worse than that, my cousin went to five funerals in Staten Island. We just had a bunch of hurricanes, we have millions of people suffering right now, we're in climate chaos. So a few things that I would like to specifically propose and encourage Central Hudson to do a much better job of. One is the supporting a shift to electric vehicles. I drive an EV hybrid myself, and I want to see, have it made easier for other people, have it made easier for everyone. That would require optional separately metered electric vehicle rates that would be discounted. We want to make it easier for people, not harder. Also, Central Hudson should be offering incentives to encourage the installation of EV charging at workplaces. Very important. People need to be able to charge while they're working. There also should be a higher incentive when the EV charging is co-located with renewable energy systems. I have to mention, I'm charging on solar at home, installed my solar, so there's no combustion in my home, and I'm driving on solar. That's, there's no reason we couldn't all be there right now. I shouldn't have to be so lucky to have this special joy, right? This should be where we all are headed very, very quickly. A few other things, the, there should be a time of use rate instead of the service size charge. So time of use rate, that would help people, help working people, control their bills, and also be saving energy by using electricity at the cheaper times. Instead of the service size charge, which basically penalizes, is not connected to peak use, and it just penalizes people who use more electricity. I'm thinking of a family that I had dinner with Sunday night, three immigrant families, hardworking, they're all in one building, they're probably using more electricity than I do as one person, right? Middle-class people tend to live with more space. And actually, three families in three different houses would be a lot more energy used, but yet they're penalized by simply using more energy as three families living together. So it's backwards. So time of use rate instead of service size charge. Really important, utility performance-based initiatives. These are in the proposal, but they're, they're no good, they're not good enough. What we should be seeing is that Central Hudson shareholders should only be rewarded for energy efficiency savings, carbon reduction savings, if the targets are actually meaningful and verifiable, and they are improvements that would not otherwise already be made. There shouldn't be any profit incentive, for example, for customer engagement. What we want is incentives for Central Hudson to actually walk its talk, and do carbon reduction, and do energy efficiency. Then, coming to the facilities question, other speakers have said there should be no thirty-six million dollar facility, we have existing facilities. So energy efficiency would suggest using existing facilities, community colleges, existing buildings. If any new facilities were to be built, any, of any sort, by Central Hudson, they should be passive house or passive commercial building certified, they should be super insulated, they should reuse materials, and if there's existing buildings to be repurposed, there should be an energy retrofit. This is a rich multinational corporation, they can afford to do the right thing and to walk the talk. In terms of the annual scorecard, there has to be some transparency and accountability. So the Department of Public Services should require an annual scorecard showing what kind of energy efficiency achievements have been made, what kind of local renewable energy is being invested in by Central Hudson to do the right thing. And we want to see the reduction in shut-offs. It's disgusting, this shut-off rate, eleven thousand people having their electricity shut off, this is disgusting. So we want to see a radical reduction in the shut-off rate, and we want to see it transparently reported on, so we want an annual scorecard for all of this. Three years, not one. Come on, what is this, one-year rate change? This is, this is absurd. So it should be rejected, and we need to have a three-year proposal, not a one-year proposal. Finally, we need Central Hudson to work with local, community-based organizations. The, there was only one local, community-based organization that was able to fight its way to the table prior to these public hearings, and that was Citizens for Local Power, and I want to give them a big shout out, they're doing incredible work, incredible leadership on this. It shouldn't be that hard to get to the table. So we need to have other community-based organizations that represent and work closely with low-income people, the people that are the customers of Central Hudson, the majority of customers should be represented at the table. So, thank you very much, getting a little in the weeds and details here, but the devil's in the details. So let's reject this proposal and have all of these points honored in the new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Penny Coleman. Penny Coleman, Penny Coleman has left the building. We'll go on to... We'll go on to Barbara Scott. And is there anybody else still here who would like to speak? Okay. Did you fill out a card? We have, we have a little bit of time. That's fine, I just need you to fill out a card, please. And Barbara Scott, right? All right, thank you, Ms. Scott.
Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Barbara Scott from Kingston. And really, most of the points I have heard and agree with, and I know the hour is getting late, so I just wanted to say that I, to support that they delay a decision on this, and we have more public hearings, and that we consider being more equal and fair in terms of who receives electricity, and so that was what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. No problem. Yes, you're next. Our last speaker, unless anybody else is going once, twice, or sold, is Laura Reecey?
Ricky. Ricky. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm from Woodstock. Anyway, I hadn't, I came here to listen more so than to speak, but I'm very appreciative and in agreement with what everybody had said. And I guess my main question is to the PSC, because we can't all control what Fortis is doing, but the PSC can, Public Service Commission can, so at least that's what we're hoping. So I guess I'm hoping that PSC feels like you can say no. Do you feel like you can say no to Fortis? That's my question.
Okay, thank you, if nobody else, oh, thank you. If nobody else wants to say anything, then I think we can be adjourned. We're off the record. I want to thank everybody who came out and put a comment in tonight. We will, with our absent stenographer, do the best as possible to make sure all of these are verbatim transcribed into the record. Again, I want to remind everybody, please go to the website and record on the website your comments today. That will be our failsafe to ensure that we have captured everything anybody says. So thank you again for your patience, thank you for coming out tonight, and have a good evening.